Good morning. Buenos dias. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this confirmation hearing to order. It is now 9:00 a.m., Monday, October 3rd, 2022. In compliance with open government law, notice of this morning's confirmation hearing is provided via email to senators, stakeholders and the local media on September 26, 2022 and October 1st, 2022. I'd like to thank my colleagues that have joined me here today, Senator Jim Moylan and Senator Telo Tai'tegui. The purpose of today's confirmation hearing is to receive testimony on the following appointments: The executive reappointment of Danilo M. Rapadis to serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board. Good morning. The executive reappointment of John McKinnon to serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board as well. Good morning to you. And the executive reappointment of William West Cassidy. Good morning. To serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board. Now to begin our agenda, to hear testimony on the executive reappointment of Mr. Danilo M. Rapadis to serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board. Just to give an overview of the board itself, it has a lot of powers, and some of the powers are to regulate its own procedures and practices in accordance with the Administrative Adjudication Act, to implement by regulation not consistent with law, inconsistent with law, that is. They are also able to restrict the withdrawal of deposits from all or one or more territorial banks where the board finds that extraordinary circumstances make such restriction necessary for the proper protection of depositors in the affected institutions. It can also order the holder of shares in a territorial bank to refrain from voting said shares on any matter if it finds that such order is necessary to protect the institution against reckless, incompetent or careless management, safeguard the funds of depositors or prevent the willful violation of this title or any laws. It can also order any person to cease violating a provision of this title or laws. Relative to insurance, it could enter into contracts for services with a certified financial examiner in good standing with the Society of Financial Examiners and with the actuary in good standing with the American Academy of Actuaries and Examination of Insurance Companies. It can institute such actions and other lawful proceedings as it may deem necessary for the enforcement of provisions of this title and other laws relating to insurance. And it could affirm, so the board can actually affirm, reverse or stay the enforcement of any order or ruling of the commissioner. It can establish rules and regulations through the Administrative Adjudication Act. So this is a very powerful board, and so we, you know, we need to make sure that the confirmation hearing, that these nominees are up to the responsibilities of this board and the powers that are given to it. So having said that, I would like to now open the floor for testimonies. And today we have the Insurance Commissioner, Michelle Santos, who is going to provide testimony. So we welcome you and you're recognized.
Good morning, senators. My name is Michelle Santos. I'm the Banking and Insurance Commissioner for the Department of Revenue and Taxation. I come this morning to testify on behalf of Mr. Rapadis, Mr. Cassidy and Mr. McKinnon. I am in favor of their reappointment. Both are, I mean, all three are very fine gentlemen and they're very, they're educated and they have served us well in the past, being board members for several years. Our experience, our department's experience with them has always been they are very reliable. They show up and they make decisions, which is very important for what we do. You are right, Senator, we do have a very powerful board, so we need these gentlemen to continue our work. And I've worked with them and I'm, I would, I ask that you approve their appointments. Thank you.
So to us, Moise, Commissioner Santos. I also like to recognize Alice Cruz, who's also from the Department of Revenue and Taxation, who is also overseeing compliance. Thank you for being here. Did you want to provide any testimony today? No? Okay. I would like to also recognize my colleagues that have joined me here today, Senator Clint Magell and Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you for joining us. So we have no other members that are going to testify, so we do have, I would like to now allow the testimony from Danilo Rapadis to provide his testimony. So you're recognized.
Again, I've been on the banking board for now, I think, two terms. This would be my third, and I may have missed one, but I think I've definitely attended most, if not all, of the meetings. And I think that consistency on the board, especially now with all of those issues out there relative to the marijuana and other things of that, I think is important. And I do and would still accept this position wholeheartedly.
All right. Does that conclude your testimony?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, so, and you had mentioned that, you know, your background is in banking?
Yes, I've been with Bank of Guam for 36, maybe going at 37 years.
And you're back, you're a lawyer?
I'm the general counsel, chief risk officer.
Okay. Well, thank you for agreeing to continue your service on the Banking Insurance Board. So being that you've served for at least two terms, I believe, so what do you see now as your contribution? First of all, what have you seen in the past and what do you see as your contribution moving forward as a board member?
Well, I think a lot has to do with, and I mentioned it earlier, consistency. I think in the past, we've had some issues having quorums, I believe, and I think the members here have been, I think the three, two other three members, I would support the other two as well. We've all been there through those times. But, and I, and I believe that the banking industry is caught in the, how do we say, in the middle of this marijuana fog right now with, with the territory. And I think that if, if needed, proper guidance can be, I guess, sought from the board with a number of bankers in that committee. And there's also, also some laypeople as well.
Okay. So, you know, as you know, you're mentioning, you know, cannabis, right? And so we know that the federal government hasn't recognized it as a, as allowable to be banked.
Yes.
Right? So, I mean, what is your position in regards to that?
I don't, I'm, I'm fine with it. The Bank of Guam, which I am the general counsel for and the chief risk officer, we do have a branch in San Francisco that does, does have marijuana-related or cannabis-related businesses, but we don't deal or touch the tier-one level type. And that's basically the, I guess, the vendors or the businesses that actually touch the leaf, but we do bank tier-two and three, I guess, businesses. So, you know, we support it as long, and, and we've talked to the FDIC about this, and they're not, they are not too concerned as long as the state or the, like in Guam's case, the territory, has a very strong set of rules and regulations and that we abide by them and that we do appropriate due diligence and risk, risk factors that we take into account with all, all of the various businesses. And, and we don't see any issues moving forward dealing with the, our regulators as long as the, I think the local laws are pretty strong and followed pretty tightly.
Okay. So as far as risk management, can you explain that a little bit more?
For Guam, and I guess if you look at the, for us in California, any customer that tries to open up an account, whether it's a loan, deposit, we do ask them, are you in the business of cannabis? Because of that, if they answer yes, or do you plan on in the future engaging in the cannabis business, then we have to put a few, a lot more resources in that business to monitor their cash activity and their ability or their presence of all of the appropriate licenses. And it's going to be an arduous, I'm not saying arduous, but a difficult task to open that as provided all of the local laws have been followed. And then we'll gladly open an account, and I guess it, for Guam, we haven't made that determination yet where, I guess, at what level that we're going to open accounts for because I guess our, what's called our bank, CAC or our, our, the department that deals with that area is still analyzing it and looking at the activity that's occurring right now. But we'll, we'll make some reviews or determination of each customer that, that tries to open an account or takes, gets a loan with us. And from there, we make a determination of whether we'll bank that customer or not because it's, it's, yeah, there's, there's a lot of guidelines they need to follow, and if they don't do it, they could be in trouble, then the bank's resources would also be in trouble, and we don't want that to happen.
All right. So it looks to me that you'll be looking at not just the risk, but also the federal laws as well as local laws?
Yeah.
To ensure?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So let's, so the, one of the, the powers of the board is to affirm or reverse a decision by the commissioner. So how do you see the relationship between the commissioner and the board in regards to making decisions?
It's, it's very healthy. It's, we're not a rubber stamp group. We have lots of discussion, and I appreciate that she's able to get the appropriate parties involved, and we make a, I think we, altogether, we make a very informed decision on everything that moves forward. It's, yeah, there's no rubber stamping involved at all.
So are there any other issues on the horizon that you see the board weighing in other than the cannabis issue, the banking issue?
Well, not, not offhand right now. We'll see how it develops in the next few months or years, and then we'll probably have to move and pivot along the way. But again, being consistently on the board and having some history and background of what's going on, I think it would be important.
Okay. In your packet, you do have, you stated you have financial interest. I believe there is a checkmark for?
Oh, yeah.
You have financial interest.
Yes, yes.
So what is, what type of financial interest?
Oh, I'm a shareholder with Bank of Guam, or Bank Guam Holding Company.
Okay.
Which is the parent company of Bank of Guam.
And did you ever have to recuse yourself from any decision-making because of that relationship?
I can't recall if we had too many things previously, but if ever Bank of Guam items came up, yes, I would step out.
Okay. And how would one determine, so it'd be, how would you determine whether there is a conflict of interest?
It's not whether there's, as long as Bank of Guam's involved, I think I will have a discussion. I said, I will step out of the room and let the board have their own discussions.
Okay.
I don't, I don't want to sit there and try to haggle over what's, if there's a conflict or not. As long as Bank of Guam is involved, I will go ahead and step out.
Okay. And then also regarding Guam laws, do you see any need to update Guam laws in regards to banking and insurance?
Yes, we do. It is still stuck in the 1980s or 70s when our founder, Mr. Jesús Ceciliang Guero drafted the code along with Joaquin Ariola, who's passed away recently. And it, it's been updated piecemeal. I think it still needs to catch up to the digital world, but that would take some time. It really would take some time.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for responding to my questions. So I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues for any additional questions. Senator Moylan, if you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Rapadis, Mr. McKinnon and Mr. Cassidy for coming back again and willing to serve the people of Guam. You know, your discussion with the committee chair here got into many of my questions, and one especially, I was concerned with the attendance also. You were very clear on that, Mr. Rapadis, how helpful that has been to gain, to gain the quorum. We've seen other boards where it was difficult to get a quorum, but with this board, it seems great. And that was also highlighted by our Commissioner Santos here, who is, you know, once, once the commissioner says very happy with, with your performances, so I thank you for that And the conversation also went into what our chairman was discussing about ways we can improve the legislation or the current law to help improve what, what you need to perform your functions. And I think that was very good of our committee chair here to bring that up. But what could be helpful for us and to expedite it as you go on to your next session, and we'll see how the 37th Guam Legislature comes together. But if you're able to draft something, sometimes that's really helpful for us, your attorney background as well, cross out something, add something, strengthen here, put in a word to make it more electronic, maybe, where we can add certain words, and then it would allow the, the next body, the 37th Legislature, to massage that a little and discuss it further in, in another meeting with, with you folks. So rather than keep this going any further, right, and we wish, we want to improve the law, let's go ahead and, I can kindly ask you to look at that for the 37th Guam Legislature and see if we can do something better to improve the law, because that's, that's what our duty is here, to help bring it up to the next level as well. There's a total membership with you folks of nine, right? So your folks are the three out of the nine, and it seems you get the quorum, but so with the other members, it doesn't seem like a need that we should look at the total membership of this board as being a problem. But maybe is, do you need more people to be members, or this is a good number, or maybe we can reduce the number also to help expedite the process? What, anybody, what do you feel about that? You're fine with the number, or would you like to see it changed?
I think a lot, I think since we've adopted Zoom meetings, I think that may, that's probably made it a lot easier for people. So I think that, that issue hopefully will not happen moving forward. But yeah, a lot had to do with, a lot of us were busy in other, other areas, and I think travel had a lot to do with that.
Also, Senator, the composition, is that what you're concerned about? Like, we have three bankers and three on the insurance, and I believe we have a lawyer and a general member. Yeah. So it, it pretty much works for us. Our lawyer is Dean Manglonia. He keeps us on our toes. So it works out very well, the three and three and the other three. So, yeah, there's a nice composition.
Well, thank you. So the other concern I have is that, you know, everybody that comes up here for, to be a board member, we all have to do this. You have to get police clearance and this clearance that costs you about total 70 bucks, right? Are you refunded for that? Does that somehow come back and that's all out of pocket, right? Maybe we can just do an affidavit that just says, hey, I didn't do anything like this. And if it shows up later that you did, you know, we can address that as well. But we could save time and some money, right? You know, get rid of that. So something we can discuss, discuss on the senator's side. But if we were able to do that, would you be in favor of that, or do you see that as a, better we continue it as is?
I don't see an issue with that. I mean, I think Michelle would probably do a good job vetting us anyway.
Now, once the commissioner vets you folks, we should be all right. Okay. Something to discuss. But again, if I can kindly ask you, as you move on to the, your next term, and thank you again, please just draft something for your committee chair to address in, in improving the law so we can make your job and the people of Guam's banking and insurance industry stronger. Okay? So with, with that, I thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. Senator Tai'tegui, if you have any questions or comments to the nominee?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning. Good morning to my colleagues and most especially to the panel here this morning. Mr. Rapadis, first, thank you so much for serving the last two terms. It's, if I'm not mistaken, six years each term?
Yes, you're aging me, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yes.
Total 12, so you're ready to do another six?
So am.
Do you think six is quite long for a board to serve six years?
Banking is dynamic, so I, I really did not see, see that six years as a drag on me. It was, because a lot of things happen, so.
Goes by really fast, in other words.
It flew by.
Six years.
It flew by.
So. Regarding the rules and regs that the chairman had brought up earlier, have you begun starting on creating these changes in the rules and regulations and some of the laws that govern the banking and insurance industry? Have you started any of that?
No.
Not at all?
No.
But it's definitely needed?
Yeah, it definitely is needed.
It's definitely, back in the?
Yes.
Caveman days?
Yes.
But you haven't started. I'm curious why. Has anybody in, in your group began to start jotting it down? Maybe, Michelle?
Yeah, if I may, Danny. We do have drafts that Alice worked with. Remember he worked with Serge Kenyon?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. So it's, it's with Senator Sabina's committee. So part of it was passed, I believe, on continuing education. We covered that already. We're doing it piecemeal because it's quite a lot to cover. So we have started it, Senator.
That's good to hear. What is the next phase? What area?
See, I'm confused too, because we got, we got told at the governor's office not to skip the Administrative Adjudication Act by going directly to Senator Perez. So I'm not sure where we stand right now. I'd have to clarify that with legal at the governor's office, so, just to make sure I'm not stepping on anybody's toes or disobeying my boss, so, yeah.
Thank you so much for that. Mr. Rapadis, what is an application for conversion or, yeah, conversion?
In what respect? Conversion of a branch?
I guess in banking, since you have some background in banking. For instance, the, the latest is the Bank Pacific application for?
Oh.
Conversion. What is that?
I guess my understanding is that they, back in the days, they were savings alone, and then the law was changed to allow them to operate, not operate, but?
Change.
But change their name into a bank.
I see.
So technically, in their background and all of the way that they're reporting, is still in a savings and loan type function. So basically, there are no more savings and loans out there, so this is to convert their entire operations into a banking structure, and that's where the conversion comes in.
I see.
So they're actually going to operate as a bank.
I see. And then I guess it's the board, like this chairman said, that chairwoman mentioned, that it's a very powerful board.
Yes.
And would it be this board to determine that application, whether, you know, they become a bank or, or not? Would it be this board to make that decision?
I believe we made a determination, yes, that it is.
It is a board?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Quite powerful.
Yeah.
You, you meet quarterly, is that correct? Is that the, the law says meets quarterly? The board meets quarterly?
Yes.
Okay. Have you met sooner because of a situation? Because I've looked at your website and I've noticed that, you know, you've met on certain days, let me pull this up, like you met on March and then you met in, or you met in February and then you met in March, you know, that's not quarterly, so you do have meetings that are sooner than, than later.
And we haven't met since then, so.
I think those were specialized meetings.
Yes.
I think that was because of what was coming up during that time.
Yeah. Okay. So in other words, you do meet quarterly, but there are times that you will meet sooner?
Sometimes, yeah, we don't also meet, Senator. If there's nothing to discuss, we don't meet.
I see. Okay. I'm showing, I appreciate, you know, I always look when it comes to boards, I always look at the website and see if it's been updated. Have, is this updated, your website, Michelle?
Yes, I believe so.
It's done on a weekly basis or monthly basis?
Maybe quarterly.
Oh, it's done quarterly?
Yeah.
Okay. I greatly, greatly appreciate that you have it there. I mean, I'm seeing the minutes of the meeting and it's easy to read for those who are looking at the website, and I appreciate that transparency for any board member to ensure that whatever is discussed is also, you know, that open government law is placed on your website for the people to see. We don't want anyone to be, you know, talked about badly. Keep a good reputation, right? So again, I thank you so much, Mr. Rapadis, for wanting to step up and serve another six years. Do you really think, do you think there should be a limit to that? I mean, since it's such a powerful board, do you think that, yeah, a limit to how many times you serve consecutively?
The other thing too, Senator, if I may, it's really hard to find board members that want to serve, so if we get one that wants to serve, it's okay with us, but I realize your point, yes.
Yeah.
I think also the specialty that's required. You need three board, three banking members and three insurance. And, you know, that, that, yeah, the pool, to pool from?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's, it's few.
What about from nine members to, let's say, seven? Is there that much work? I mean, you only meet quarterly.
Yeah. You're asking me, or?
Oh, you, Mr. Rapadis.
Oh, I'm.
You're on the hot seat right now.
Yeah. Yeah, I keep looking at the eyes. I'm, I'm actually, I'm, I think nine is fine.
Nine is fine?
Because it does create that discussion.
Okay. And the limited term, do you think there should be at least, you know, two consecutive terms and then step down, but you?
And again, it's because of the specialty.
Right?
I mean, I've, some people just don't want to step up, and it gets difficult to find the, the insurance group or the banking group to come in, so I'm fine with it.
Okay. So you find the way it is?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you again so much, Mr. Rapadis, and I wish you the greatest luck in another term, and my office is always open if there's anything I can do to assist.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tai'tegui. Senator Clint Magell, if you have any questions or comments?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Mr. Rapadis, thank you for serving on the commission. It's a very important, on the bank, Banking and Insurance Board, excuse me, it's a very important role. And of course, we appreciate the time you put into that very important role.
Thank you.
My questions, of course, are going to be with regards to cannabis, as I'm sure you can anticipate. You mentioned a little bit earlier about the role of the board in helping figure out how the banking industry, whether or not the banking industry will be able to accept proceeds from cannabis businesses, things of that nature. Is there anything that lawmakers can do from the policy level that could assist with the banking of cannabis?
I believe looking at the fee structure might be something that you may want to look at again, only because that industry has to basically pay for itself at sometimes. And if you look at a lot of other industries, other states, those fees are a lot higher than Guam. That helps subsidize a lot of the, the regulatory side. And also, it helps sift out a lot of the carpetbagger-type businesses who think they can come in, get a license and see what they can try to do. The ones that are serious will be able to pay the appropriate fees and move on from there.
Also, has there been any, I know it's been brought up at some of the, I've attended, of course, at least one of the meetings that your board has had, and the issue came up, of course, about banking of cannabis proceeds. And there was a little bit of discussion about, you know, cashless-type systems, or there's these third parties that work in some other states, I believe, to try to facilitate banking. Is that anything that you guys have been able to look into more recently?
I believe we are studying it. I've. I, and again, I'd have to talk to the operations area that actually looks into it, but if I get some, when I get something from them, I could pass it on to you, but there are ways to do it, it's being done in the mainland. It's just we need to, each bank has to feel comfortable at what electronic-type payments they'd be willing to do.
Do you think that the cannabis industry should be focused on any sort of cashless system personally, or what are your thoughts on it?
Well, the handling of cash is very expensive. I believe there, a lot of states have their own separate accounting rooms for the cash that you have to deal with. Electronic is probably going to be the easiest anywhere, especially when it comes to the accounting side. But, and again, I know, again, we do have a group that's looking at it, but electronic would make it easier, but in a lot of the cashless-type business, like Visa, Master Card, they don't allow it. They won't allow you to use your debit, your credit card, to purchase any cannabis-related products. So, there's, and until the federal law has changed in that regard, yeah, it's not, we don't believe it's going to happen. It would have to be another form that's being utilized in the mainland right now.
I think there are some companies, I think there's a CanPay company. I don't know a whole lot about the CanPay company, but I've just read a few articles about how they're doing some of that work to allow for cashless transactions, electronic transactions and the like. So, perhaps that's a possibility, something along those lines, or a similar company?
Yeah, it would be very helpful, because you don't want people to be walking around with their knapsack full of cash to pay for anything. Because that was how it was done in, I think, the early days of California.
And ultimately, I would think that banks would want to bank cannabis proceeds, especially once the industry really takes off and there's a lot of money involved. But I understand, of course, the position that the banking industry is in, you have to make sure that the cash that you're banking from cannabis proceeds are, is clean money, it's actually from cannabis proceeds.
Yes, of course.
In a regulated industry, and there's not any other money laundering going on through that cannabis business, right? Is that the biggest issue, is prevention of money laundering?
Yes, it is, and also obviously violating federal laws. But yes, the money laundering is a big issue, because that can be hidden underneath, and it's, for instance, if you have a license even to grow at home, if all of a sudden you're bringing in $10,000, and you're only allowed to have, what, six plants, and all of a sudden, you're bringing in $10,000 a month, yeah, that's going to throw up red flags everywhere. And all banks, including us, have systems to catch things like that.
Okay, and then I guess, if there's anything else we can do, just please let us know. You can call my office anytime, of course.
Will do.
If there's anything that I can do to assist your board and the banking industry with figuring out a way to be able to bank cannabis proceeds. Thank you, Mr. Rapadis.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ruggel. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and certainly good morning to you, Mr. Rapadis.
Morning.
Thank you for coming and accepting a reappointment. 12 years is a long time, and then-
Yes, it is.
-being willing to, you know, come forth and serve another, it's lengthy terms, six years, that's a long-time commitment, but thank you for doing so. I did want to ask you, we mentioned, my colleagues had asked earlier with regards to updating legislation and rules and regulations, I believe you guys have looked at or are looking at updating rules and regulations for insurance. Are there updates needed for rules and regulations for the banking industry on Guam?
Yes, there are. I mentioned it earlier, we need to catch up to the digital.
Yes, you had mentioned that, yes.
That is something that I think we need to look at very closely. There's a lot of regulations, and again, they were put together in the 70s, and they've been, any kind of amendments have been put together piecemeal to deal with situations that come up here and there. So, I'm, probably an overall look at everything probably needs, definitely needs to be done.
Is that something that you guys are doing as a board, or do you have support staff through Mrs. Santos's office to help you facilitate? Because, I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of work and overview, I mean, I'm sure you bring your own credentials to the table, but it's not a full-time job for you or the other board members, so how are you guys planning on going about addressing that? Because you're right, 1970s is a long, long time ago. We were here, but it was a long time ago. Mrs. Santos?
We, we, Alice worked with Serge Kanga when he was at the Attorney General's Office, and they pretty much covered most of the banking and insurance law, and we made recommendations to Senator Sabina, so she has it all.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know to what extent, whether it covers everything.
You don't, haven't received anything?
But it addressed the more critical issues.
Okay.
Yeah.
The chair is nodding negatively. Did you receive any of those drafts?
Yeah, I just can make a clarification, we did receive a bill for insurance, not banking.
Okay, so not banking, okay.
No banking? No banking? Okay, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry, I guess we didn't do the banking part. I thought we did everything, but we didn't. But we'll look at it.
Okay. I think it would be helpful, because certainly I do agree with you, the world has changed so much. I mean, back then, we're, you know, we had party lines on the phone.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, least of all to the day of how quickly information can move.
Yes.
And again, it's to ensure things are properly done and have the proper oversight with regards to the work that's being done on Guam. And for you, certainly the expertise you bring to the table, but you're also overseeing your industry, so to speak, that you're involved in. Have you ever felt that's an issue of conflict for you? Or, I mean, I've no doubt your credentials bring a significant benefit to the table, and you did mention, of course, and we appreciate that, if it's anything that conflicts with your bank, you step out, you're not engaged and involved in it. But have you ever seen an issue of concern, or do you think pretty much how the current makeup of your board is working well, or?
I believe, I know it's working well, I have no concerns.
With regards to regularly meeting, I see from looking at your meetings dates, I mean, there's not, sometimes, maybe one meeting in a single year, at least if there's formal record or minutes, is there a reason as to why you don't meet? I mean, how often do you meet? I mean, some boards and commissions meet every month. Are you aiming for every quarter? What is, what is the schedule for the meeting?
It's supposed to be every quarter, that's what the law allows.
Okay.
We haven't had to meet lately, but we will be meeting. If there's an issue, we call the board. If there isn't anything to discuss, we don't call a board meeting. Everybody's pretty much very busy, so that's the way we look at it, but when we need to, they all show up and we do what we have to do, yeah.
Well, I guess it's just a question of how, who's in charge of what? I mean, you're calling them when you need them versus, you know, do they as a board decide when they meet? I understand, I totally understand your point.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, is it an unreasonable requirement to meet on a quarterly basis if you have the ability to do it online, on Zoom, or whatever the case may be? Even just as a status check to verify with your members if there's anything, if there's nothing to discuss, then you adjourn, but just for the record, so that there's, at least the public knows there's some continuity and consistency?
Okay.
You know, that even if you have nothing on the agenda, then we all take attendance, and we've reviewed it, we have no main issues on the agenda, and, you know, five minutes, we're out of there, but at least it shows that there's follow-up and follow-through that, you know, that the board is continuing to be active, even if there is no issue before you.
You know, I don't mean to be, Alice's branch takes care of insurance, securities, banking, real estate. We take care of, you know, the money exchanges. We do a lot, and I have less than 10 people in that branch. We haven't been able to hire good people because of the pay. We need, basically, we need people that have an accounting degree so they can examine. We don't have that. I don't have resources. We need an actuary, we need a lawyer, we don't have access. We have money, but, you know, the hiring and firing is controlled at the director's level. I don't even have a say in my staff, so our resources are limited, yeah.
Well, you know, it's interesting, because when we had your director from REVEN Tax, I mean, we ended up during the budget hearing, finding there was a number of limited-term employees. Many of them have been there for a number of years, which, you know, in terms of, and even the justification, you know, it's, well, we, you know, they're experienced, and we want to keep them, but that's not the way to do it. So, I think we just need to look maybe at the hiring practices, because this government has continued to grow, even during this pandemic. We have more employees, where they're at and what they're doing, I don't know.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you bringing that to light, because this is a critical area, I mean, this is where money moves, and plenty money moves.
Yes.
And so, we certainly would want to make sure that things are above board, as, you know, all the professionals, and particularly in the business that you're in, of wanting to make sure things are being done properly and legally. But to find out we've got such a weakness with regards to our ability to properly oversee or staff it, especially with the concerns raised up, that, you know, the legislation and the oversight of it's very old, and we need to update, we need to improve that, and you don't have the basic tools that you need to do that, well, how do we know everything's okay? We really don't. You know, there's no real verification that that's happening, other than we're saying it is, but, you know, I could say a lot of things do. Doesn't mean it holds any weight anywhere.
And it's also the type of positions we have, like, if we were, you know, to get an overall rounded person that doesn't examine, like a management analyst or a programs coordinator, you know, they can address, like, the law issues, but as it is now, we only have one limited term in our branch. So, usually, the tax side gets addressed, you know, or driver's license, where the need is because of the customer service, and we all try to help. When it's tax day, we pull all our resources and we help each other. Doesn't matter where, whether you're regulatory or motor vehicle, we all help out on tax day, you know? Whether it's to direct traffic, I mean, our office, our department is very good about that. Our employees are very good about that, so I appreciate that, and, you know, the willingness to work together, so.
Well, I think it's a very good thing. I mean, we certainly hear a lot of outreach from REVEN Tax, but, you know, you're bringing up an area that most people don't hear about or know about.
You're right about that.
Most people don't even know, you know, there's appointees that exist on this board that perform this function. I mean, people just go to the bank and either deposit money, borrow money, withdraw money, and maybe that's the extent of most people's engagement, so most people probably don't even, to the degree of the work that you do, I probably don't even have familiarity with it. But I appreciate your candor in relaying what those limitations are. Those probably are specific things in government. Again, I'm looking in specific areas where I think there's critical need, because I'm not all for growing government and adding on, and, because I just think eventually the ship's going to sink.
Yeah.
You know, if we keep loading, loading, and, you know, we can't currently, in our current economy, support this existing government now, this billion-plus-dollar budget, so I'm not all for adding on. But I think where there are critical areas of accountability that need to be put in place, I'm very supportive of that. Maybe that's something we need to look at with regards to your specific division. We've certainly recently, in the budget bill, addressed it for the Office of Public Accountability, so I appreciate you bringing it forth. And again, I'm just relaying it, you know, Mr. Rapadis, I appreciate your, again, your interest, because this is on top of your regular day-to-day job and coming forth and desiring to sign on for another six years, but again, I just think there's a need for consistency. If you're going to meet once a quarter, if it's a five-minute meeting, we've got nothing on the agenda, then so be it. We had an issue, and still have an issue with the medical board, and there's been a lot of public criticism that's been brought on them, because, you know, they get complaints, they don't follow up, they lose complaints, you know? People are wondering what the heck is going on, and we certainly don't want to see that in this particular area. So, I think if at least we're on top of it, we've got no major issues, or as we see, there is a need to upgrade regulations, what are we doing to work on that, and what resources are we putting together? Just so that there is some consistency, otherwise the dust settles a little too much.
Yes.
You know, what, how do you, how do you feel that the board's really being active and engaged if they hardly ever meet as a body? So, I'm just bringing that up. But thank you, and thank you, Mr. Rapadis, for stepping up to the plate, for signing up for another six years. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown, and yes, we'll definitely follow up with that. I know two budget cycles ago, we did segregate insurance and banking fees out from DRT, whereas before it was within the agency. So, I think it'd be good investment to hire somebody who can help with the rules and regs, because I think this is a long time coming, so we'll definitely follow up with that. But in regards to the nomination, thank you, Mr. Rapadis, for agreeing to serve the, to continue to serve on the insurance and banking board, and with your expertise, I think that it's an important, you know, aspect of this board, to have the proper, you know, competency level to help to kind of decipher what's happening within the industry and also the changes coming forward. So, we do appreciate your continued service, and so I think this, being that there are no other testimonies in regards to his reappointment, your nomination hearing is duly heard. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM, Monday, October 10th. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It could also be dropped off at the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. This is Massey for your attendance and your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're going to continue with the hearing on the hearing of the testimony relation to the reappointment of Mr. John McKinnon to serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board. So, we would like now to open up the floor to Commissioner Santos, if she wants to add to her testimony, or, okay. So, in that case, the next person signed up is Isaac Flores, so please state your name and proceed with your testimony. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Senators. My name is Isaac Flores. I'm here to speak in favor of John McKinnon's reappointment to the Banking and Insurance Commission Board. I've known John for 35 years, give or take. As a matter of fact, we're godfathers to each other's, one of our, one of our children. I've grown up with John, like I said, for 35 years, and I can remember weekends going to John's house, and John would be under his car, trying to fix the car, working on it, you know? I'd come up with some, you know, some way to work around his problem. John would just say, point to the book, this little Chilton book that he'd have, and he'd tell me, is it in there? No, that we're not doing it. We've got to go by the book, we've got to make sure this is all done, this is all done by the book. So, the work ethic that he had, his commitment to doing things by the book, I believe, will serve him and this board and the people of Guam during his reappointment. Thank you.
Right, this is Massey, Mr. Flores, for that testimony. Is there anyone else that would like to testify prior to the nominee? Okay, so, John, if you're, you can state your name and provide your testimony. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for hearing me today. My name is John McKinnon, and I'm again coming to be, requesting to be reappointed. I still see myself as a freshman, really, in the chair. When I first started, I was halfway through the seat that I filled, so I didn't have a full six years. But during that time, I did participate in all the meetings, listen to the discussions, participated in outside meetings where the board, where the committee was invited to, such as the cannabis discussions. And so, I was committed, I'm committed, and I still want to, you know, do what I can for the island on this board. I have over 25 years in banking. I've held many seats. The most recent one is as the Regulatory Risk for the bank. This covers compliance with federal law, Guam law, and I also do BSA, so again, with the cannabis and AML and all that stuff, that's all tied in there. As the, as what, as a Regulatory Risk Officer, I'm always looking at what's going on within our institution that I work for, Bank Pacific. I'm seeing that we're doing things by the book. I handle complaints. I like to like to hear what's going on from the customer. I put myself really as an independent person, even at work, not just always in favor for the bank itself, but just to see that we're doing things correctly. I don't want the bank to get in trouble for anything that, you know, that we overlook just because we want to save face or a few bucks. So, you know, when I was given that position, they knew how I was, and that I would point a finger if I had to, if I did see something wrong. You know, again, like I said, it was, sitting here was only for about, I think, three years that I sat, and I would like to continue to- that I sat and, uh, and I would like to, to continue to serve. Not only do I want to help the island, I mean, just from the discussions we've had, I feel that it's actually helping me as well in my, in what I do outside of the, of the, of the board. So I, I request that you please, uh, you know, renew my request. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKinnon, for your testimony. And so, um, it's a couple of questions, you know, regards to your service on the board. And then, um, I guess what, what do you see, what was your service on the board? What contributions did you make? And what do you see moving forward, um, if we do confirm you?
Yeah, so, so in the time, you know, we had, I guess, when I came in, we were talking about insurance. Didn't say much, wasn't my field, but I did listen to what was going on and seeing if it was a fair, um, request of what was trying to be done. And I think that was to control outsiders coming in and, uh, taking business away from the local insurance providers. Second thing after that was again, the cannabis. Uh, you know, it's a big, it's a big topic, um, as Merpottis was talking about, there's, and Clint, but yeah, um, how do we make that work for, for, for our island? So, you know, I, I did contribute from, from what I could, uh, from my experience. Uh, I did listen and we did have healthy discussion, I felt. And again, you know, that, that's not settled yet, so we're still working on that as it comes along. But, um, you know, I want to continue doing that and then as I, as I get a better feel, as I understand more of what's going on, I, you know, I will give my, 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 uh, my two cents, if you will, and then, um, yeah.
So you mentioned that, um, you know, insurance is not your, your background, but, so how was the decision made in regards to, um, I guess, the issue that came up with the board regarding, uh, I guess, outside companies?
Yeah, so even, you know, the, we're, when that, in that situation, insurance is not, types of insurance and stuff like that, how insurance works was not, I think, really relevant. It was more of how we can help our local businesses, um, without having people or businesses outside come in and take, and take, um, the business away from them. Also, you know, when we're looking at it, I'm taking it from a perception of these people or these businesses that are coming in or trying to provide insurance are not here. They can't really help the, 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 the community with, with what's going on with like saved insurance claim and stuff like that. It would all be like a third party or something like, so there's no, um, real connection. Uh, so when I was, again, reading the, the things that were provided on what was going to happen there, I think there was another thing too about the certification, how that's going to help the agents. You know, it was just not really having to know the insurance industry, but seeing what was best from, you know, from, from, from how it was being handled. And so, of course, when I, when I was reading it, I didn't have any objections to anything. So I didn't make a fuss or, or anything of that sort.
Okay, so, but what laws did you consult with in regards to, because that's really what the Insurance Banking Commission is supposed to do?
Yeah, that was, that was my first, uh, uh, seat, so I admit I didn't read any laws. I just kind of looked at what was provided by the, the, the committee.
But yeah, that's part of the responsibility of the board is to look at the laws currently in place and make that determination.
Understood.
Yeah, and so did you look through the laws in regards to insurance?
Again, no, because as, as I said, that was my first chair, we sat there. And so I was really unsure what to expect. So I, I just read, I didn't contribute to a decision on what was going to happen. Again, because I was, I didn't have anything really to, to go on.
Okay.
In the future, I will.
In the future, okay. All right, so in regards to banking, so that, that is your expertise. So how would you, uh, I guess, approach, you know, the issue, issues with cannabis banking? What is your perspective in that? And, and what are the laws that you would look at? Because according to, um, yeah, I guess what was said earlier is that you're by the book, right? So what is, what are the rules, what are the laws in place that you would look at when it comes to banking?
Well, right now, you know, it was mentioned earlier that, uh, the federal government looks at still as an illegal substance. I personally have no, you know, difference one way or another for, for, um, for cannabis. I, I can see its benefits and I, and, and I don't have any real strong, um, feelings that, that it's not, that it's not a good thing. But as a, as a banker, um, again, it's the risk of, uh, uh, monitoring those, those, uh, types of accounts. It does cost a lot. I sit on a, I live, I mean, I work on a, with a small community bank. Uh, that would, that would pull a lot of investments, uh, or money for us to, to try to, uh, maintain those type of accounts. So, you know, right now, we're not looking at, 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 uh, housing any banking or banking any cannabis customers at this time. Uh, should the federal law change, then we'll do that. But yeah, it just because it leads into a lot of responsibilities and monitoring. And I'm not sure if, um, we're willing to take that risk at this point. But, you know, outside of the committee, if, if we could, or not outside, outside of the bank, Bank Pacific and in the committee, you know, like I said, I, I'm, I'm not against or opposing of it. So I would work and, you know, that's why I sat in when they had the discussions with the cannabis committee to see what was going on, what the discussion was about, what the, what the issues were that they had and, 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 uh, listen to other bankers to see what kind of ideas they could share and we can discuss on them.
Okay, so if you can just maybe list some of those laws that you look at? What are some of the laws that you would actually refer to?
Just off the top of my head, I mean, there's the BSA AML Act. Uh, again, I did not really look deep, deep into it because we're not looking at banking them at this point. The discussions were really open discussions, they were not specific to any laws at the point. Uh, we were just looking and seeing what other states were doing. That's all.
Okay, maybe I should talk about, you know, your, your position as a compliance officer. So what kind of laws do you look at when you are looking for compliance?
I mean, we look at a whole bunch of laws. We look at, uh, the different, they, we call it the ABC soup of regulations. There's for fair lending, there's for expedited funds, there's, um, OODAP. I mean, there's, there's a, there's a number of laws. It really depends on what's going on. So in my seat, if, if, if I should explain is that, uh, you know, depending on what I'm doing, so in the review, we look at the high-risk, uh, um, type of regulations. We'll just take credit for example, because that's where it has a bigger, uh, probably a bigger, um, oversight or it requires a bigger oversight because of all the things. And you have your RESPA laws, which, you know, requires for what kind of disclosures are provided. Uh, as I mentioned, you have to be fair, so you have to, a Reg B where you have to kind of look at Equal Opportunity Act, where you have to kind of make sure that you're doing the best for the borrower, you're not, um, tricking them into getting into a loan that's going to cost them more. Uh, you got your Reg Z where you tell them, uh, what's the cost of the loan? Um, you know, you kind of break things off for them. And so when I'm doing my, my work, you know, when we're doing, like I just said, we're going to launch a new program or, or a new product, you know, I reference the, the related laws. I review them, I see what we're doing, I look at industry standards, compare, uh, uh, what we're planning to do with what we see. Again, checking, you know, if I need to, we do get legal help, um, to review some of the stuff that needs, uh, uh, explanation or, or, or to be, or to clarify. I go direct to, direct to my regulators, FDIC, and I ask them, you know, questions of, how can we do this or, or am I approaching this the wrong way and stuff like that to get, to get a guidance from them as well. So, you know, I'm not going to sit and say that, uh, I'm a walking encyclopedia that knows everything, but I do know how to use my resources. Guam law, I'll admit to you openly that, uh, I don't run into going to the Guam law that often. Mostly because a lot of our practices are pretty much set with what's going on in the law. The question you may ask is what do I see to change on it? I, again, I cannot tell you what I, what, what we need to change because from what I see, it's, it's worked for me. I'm sure, uh, uh, yeah, updating it for the digital and stuff is, 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 is necessary. And I'm not saying again, that we don't need to update the laws because just like the policies and the regulations that, that are provided, that we create in the bank and the regulations that are provided by the federal government, they are changed as times go by. And we just got to make sure that we're, uh, up to it, uh, understanding what's going on and how it affects us as we do our work.
Well, thank you. Um, in regards to Guam law versus federal law, uh, do you see any inconsistencies or conflicts between the two?
I, I have not, uh, and as I stated, you know, I, I haven't had to really check Guam law too much since I've been working in, in a Guam bank. That's about 10 years, uh, a little over that, I'm sorry. Most of the times when I'm doing it, you know, the, the biggest difference, if you, if you want to know, is, is, uh, part of federal law is, is probably more intricate, more detailed, more, uh, confusing even, where, where the Guam law is a little bit easier to, to read. Sometimes it does have room for, where, where we're not sure and that's when I'll get legal counsel to come in and help, uh, find out, um, you know, if, if our understanding is correct. I mean, but yeah, I mean, like I said, it's only a handful of times that I've done it. I've read, I mean, I've kind of checked the different areas of the law. I have not read it word for word or line by line, uh, but I've, you know, just to kind of get familiar of what, what, what areas the bank, uh, the bank law covers. I know it's not as detailed as like, say, federal law.
Okay, and so if you had to make a decision, right, um, how would you base your decision? Which laws do you think would come into play?
Well, first, ultimately, what we do is I would look at the regulation, the federal law, and see what they say. And then after that, I would look at, uh, if it, if it's covered under the Guam law, look under the Guam law, if there's any extra lines or, or boundaries that they put up, then I'll intricate that or put that into, to our decision. So like, for example, if it says, just say, federal law said cannabis is legal, I mean, all sorts of it, you know, but then Guam said it's illegal. So I know cannabis is legal, but since I'm in the territory of Guam and we say that it's illegal, then that's where I would follow.
Okay, so you follow the more stricter guidelines?
I would follow the more stricter of the two, yeah. And it, and how, it, again, and how it applies to the island. So if, 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 if federal says it's okay, but Guam says it's not, then I'm going to go with Guam law.
And vice versa, what were, if that were?
If Guam said, or if Guam law says it's okay, federal says it's not, then I'm going to go with federal law.
Okay, all right. Um, and then you were talking about, um, you know, risk management. And I think part of that is, um, you know, the, the anti-money laundering parts of federal law. So do you see that being applied equally on Guam in the banking industry?
Yeah, I can only speak on behalf of, of the bank, but really, if you, you look at it, the law that I'm following is the same law that the other banks are following or anybody that's covered under BSA. And, and it would have to be the same. Now, if they had any weaknesses in their program, that's, that's, that's on that, that, uh, that, that institution, but as a whole, they should all have pretty much the same standards. Some banks, uh, may be a little more conservative and that's because of the risks, again, that's, that's undertaken. So to want to do business with people or, or people or businesses are on higher risk, uh, that's the, the, you know, the bank's decision because, you know, again, it could jeopardize, we can get in trouble by federal, uh, we can get fines, we can get shut down, we can get limited for, um, how many account, or branches we can have. So there's, you know, there's a lot of things in there. So we want to make sure that we're, we're, we're not, um, exposing ourselves to where we can get bit later on. Uh, and, and, and so going back to, again, to your question, do I think it's, it's, it's fair? You know, from, from what I can see, it is. And I don't see, um, yeah, I don't see any disparity anywhere. A lot of honestly, what you're looking at, asking for, for BSA too, is, is really behind the scenes when you're wa, when you come in, you know, um, you get asked questions and stuff like that. And again, by the bank, it varies depending on how much risk they want to, they want to take. So they'll ask the questions to determine a risk, they're doing assessment and stuff. But then when you're monitoring and stuff like that, it's, 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 it's behind the wall. It's, it's us looking at transactions, it's us looking at things that are anomalies of how people are, are doing their, their, their business. And then just really seeing if, if there is something funny going on or not. If we can explain where the funds are coming and going to money laundering and, and does it make sense for, for the individual or the business? So those are, again, like, part in the bag that doesn't get seen.
Okay, um, so yeah, thank you for your responses and, um, I think it's really critical to look at the laws, you know, making these decisions. And it's, I'm glad that you're able to, you know, explain your positions on these things. Just one more thing, a conflict of interest, do you have any conflict of interest?
Just in the committee? Or are you talking anything specific?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, in general, or what is your?
I don't have any conflict of interest that I, that I'm aware of. Sitting here though, there was the one that was brought up by, uh, um, sorry, Tal, uh, for, about the, the conversion for Bank Pacific. At that point, I stood out from any decision-making on that, uh, just so that, you know, no bias feelings would come through.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for responses, Mr. McKinnon. And I'd like to open the floor to my colleagues, Senator Moynihan.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Very, very informative information. I never learned so much about what you guys do on the board till today. So I really have no other questions unless there's something you wish to add on to the earlier discussion, especially coming from Mr. Merpottis there. Is there any additional comments you'd like to make?
No, not this one, thanks.
But thank you very much and appreciate you coming on board one more time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. Senator Tye Degui.
Good afternoon, John.
Hello.
Congratulations for being nominated a second time, if I'm not mistaken. I believe you, excuse me, your first, uh, meeting was in December of 2020, is that correct?
That sounds about right, yeah.
Sounds about right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so technically, if you look at the board minutes of the meeting, uh, you probably attended about three so far?
About, yeah. I know I attended everything that, that came on.
I noticed though, one board meeting that you didn't attend, which was in March of 2022. Is there a reason why?
Um, I believe that's the one where there, where there's a conflict of interest, where they're discussing the, the conversion of, uh, Bank Pacific from a, from a thrift or savings and loans to a bank.
Absolutely. I think that's, yeah, I was hoping you would say that because I know that the, the chairwoman asked you about, excuse me, a conflict of interest. So you did your due diligence and I appreciate that. It says a lot about your character, so I appreciate that. I'm, and I'm sure that continuing on, you're going to do the same thing if anything should come about.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so that means you basically only served for about two years and this will take you into, um, another six and you'll be able to make all those meetings, no, with no issues?
Oh, sure, no. When I first got in the seat, I was dedicated to, you know, sit again. I think really, you know, quarterly is not a big, uh, commitment. And, and, and like I said, I did attend some of the outside meetings where the board was, was, uh, invited to for, for discussion or, um, I mean, really, you know, really, I'm not going to be able to be efficient or, or effective if I'm not participating and knowing what's going on. So just like, you know, I saw all the other members coming in as well. I think we're all committed to, to making sure that we, we are, are doing what we need to do for this industry and for the people.
No, thank you, John. And, um, how do you feel, by the way, about nine members? Do you think it's, you know, sometimes they say there's too many shifts in the kitchen, you know? And, but how do you feel about that from lowering it down to seven?
No, I, I think really the way it is right now of nine, I didn't see any issue with it. I thought the discussions, uh, for the, at the table were very, um, uh, handled well, I guess. You know, we, we had, we had a fair, um, you know, business of banking, uh, insurance outside of, of the industry, individuals as well. And, 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 you know, it was a, it was not an out of control discussion like if we had too many people. But I don't, I, I think if you do make it smaller, it might take away a little bit of the ideas that were coming to the table.
Well, thank you for your understanding. Well, thank you for your honesty, and again, thank you for willing to serve. It is quite long, and it's, like we said earlier, it's a very powerful board, so I'm glad you're willing to serve on something like this, and be prepared for any scrutiny there may be. And definitely, you mentioned earlier that you're looking forward to reading, you know, these rules and regulations, and maybe, you know, making some changes that are needed. I mean, the insurance side is moving forward, but, you know, I didn't see anything on the banking, but if you look into that.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, I wish you the very best, and my office is always open if there's anything I can do to assist you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. Senator Rangel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McKinnon, congratulations, of course, on your, on your reappointment. You said you have served a part of a term before?
Correct.
Congratulations on your appointment again and for accepting this. You mentioned that your particular bank that you work for, Bank Pacific, is not interested in banking cannabis proceeds at this time, so you haven't really looked at it thoroughly, correct?
Yeah, right now, it's not really, again, not the one, but I think discussions we have with our regulator, you know, Mr. Repodis said, you know, that they didn't say we couldn't do it, and they didn't say definitely they couldn't do it. And then there's different sizes of the banks and stuff like that. So, you know, for a smaller bank, I'm thinking the risk is just, is just too big for us to take up. I can speak for Phil saying that I know that he's not opposing cannabis at all, but, but business-wise, yeah, it would take a lot for us to monitor, and so we're not really looking into it. We're watching on the sidelines, if you will, and I'm speaking as the bank, not as the committee, to see how it's going on, how it's done in the states and stuff like that. But there is a lot of other things, I guess, that are in the forefront of that. So this is, you know, if then something comes up, if there's a breakthrough, or something that we see, I mean, we used to follow, actually, we still receive information from the states and how they're handling it, you know, it's kind of slowed down. But, yeah, it's not that we don't want to do it, it's just, again, that the risk is just too big for the bank of our size.
So I was just wondering if you've had the opportunity to look at the, any of the FinCEN guidance with regards to banking cannabis proceeds?
It's been a while, but I have taken a look a little bit of it, yeah.
Okay. So I'd just like to recommend, if you could, at least from your position on the board, since it's something, you know, the board will be discussing banking of cannabis proceeds, if you could take a close look at the FinCEN guidance. And you're right, there's a lot, I understand the risk, because basically, there's, and the work involved. You have to do a lot more work to bank cannabis proceeds, basically. But there is, just also, I want to be clear on the record for the public at home or listening, that there is guidance from FinCEN. FinCEN is the Financial Enforcement Crime, let me get the, Financial Crimes Enforcement Network, short as FinCEN. And they have issued guidance specific to BSA expectations, and BSA is the Bank Secrecy Act, Expectations Regarding Marijuana-Related Businesses. And in their guidance, the guidance was put forth to clarify how financial institutions can provide services to marijuana-related businesses consistent with their BSA obligations. So there is an entire sort of a framework set out for it by FinCEN. I've read through some of it, and you're right, it is, you have more risk, because there's a lot of different things you have to make sure you follow. There's just, it's just a lot, much more of a thorough process when vetting potential customers to be banking with your institution. So I just wanted to put that on the record, so at least the listening public at home knows that there is some sort of framework for it, there's some guidance that has been put out by FinCEN. However, it is up to each and every financial institution to determine for themselves if it's a risk they're willing to take, if it's work that they're willing to take on, if it's extra work they're willing to do. I think some of the financial institutions in the states, what they do is they just charge higher fees for banking cannabis proceeds. That's what I've heard, is that some of the financial institutions in the states that bank cannabis proceeds, they just charge really high banking services fees to make up for the work that they have to do in vetting and making sure that everything is above board and to BSA guidelines. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. And I'd like to actually add to what Mr. Repodis said about the fees, you know, for the industry here. You know, I think that's one thing, too, that makes it a little bit harder. I mean, if we're going to look at that in the banking industry, is that the bank has to do, again, a lot of the monitoring, we have the insight behind the wall, like I said earlier, but then, you know, actually going to locations and making sure they're abiding by what the regulation that for cannabis is on Guam, making sure that that's there, and, you know, without funding, and that's probably where the larger fees will come in, we can have something that's stronger, where the bank can feel more comfortable in banking those guys, because they know that they're being monitored, and it's not just all on the bank to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no other questions or comments.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Rangel. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much. I really don't have a lot of questions. I think our colleagues have pretty much gone through the questions. I appreciate you being upfront and elaborating, I mean, you've just sat through three years of a six-year term, and I appreciate your interest in wanting to continue to serve. Again, most of these issues are complicated, most people, like I mentioned earlier with Mr. Repodis, are really not aware of your board or what you do and what impact you have with regards to overseeing or regulating banking and insurance on Guam. So the fact that you have the interest in doing it is most appreciated. Wish you continued success in your upcoming term.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Senator Brown. Seeing that there are no other testimonies on the reappointment of John McKinnon on the Insurance and Banking Board, this hearing is duly heard. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 p.m. Monday, October 10, 2022. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores-Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue, Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research, and Planning. It can be dropped off the mailboxes at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. All right, thank you. And so now we move on to the next item of the agenda, is to hear the executive appointment of Mr. William West Cassidy to serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board Insurance Representative. And right now, we don't have any other further public members to testify, so we'd like to recognize the nominee himself, William West Cassidy, for his testimony. Please state your name first.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is William West, actually, just West Cassidy is fine. I've been in the insurance industry since 1994 in various capacities, and most recently as the General Manager of Pacific Indemnity Insurance Company, which is a local domestic chartered insurance company. And I definitely appreciate the confidence in being asked to serve on this board. I think it's absolutely important, or if not critical, that representation always be given to a domestic underwriting company, as well as a domestic bank or locally chartered bank. These are very important industries, and I think the insight that management from these local institutions is critical, to be able to contribute positively to institutions like this board.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that testimony. So you want to continue serving in the board because, what is the reason you want to continue?
Well, I think it's very important to consider, as Danny mentioned, the pool of available contributors to, with expertise in these two industries on Guam. If we look at the three different types of insurance companies or categories of insurance companies here, actually, in every jurisdiction in the United States, we have what are called alien companies, which are companies that are incorporated outside of the United States. We have foreign companies, which are companies that are incorporated within the United States outside of Guam, and we have domestic companies, which are incorporated here in Guam. Now, within the definition of domestic company, there's a smaller subset, and that smaller subset is composed of companies that are, of domestic companies that are incorporated here, of course, but are incorporated with local capital, and that number is very small. And in fact, with regard to the property and casualty insurance industry, that number is only two, actually, three, most recently. That would be ourselves at Pacific Indemnity, that would be FirstNet Insurance Company, and that would be, most recently, Perpeturo Insurance Company. So if you're looking at expertise developing within these industries, to make sure that there's real local insight and consideration given in certain capacities on this board, that's not a very, very, very big pool to draw from. And I think one of the things, one of the questions that I keep, that I've heard this morning, has been with regard to the term, the six-year term. And I think with these industries, continuity is absolutely critical. And so when, if we start with the small pool of available expertise, I think it's absolutely necessary for us to have a longer term in order to ensure that continuity.
All right, thank you. And so, you know, one of the things that we're seeing is like globalization, right, in general? So do you, I mean, being that you're, you know, you're a local company with specific, I guess, the capital is coming here locally, what do you see as some of the issues with globalization, or is there a way to balance some of that?
Well, you know, Guam, with regard to the insurance industry, Guam's a very small market compared to the rest of the world. And I think it's very important for us to always understand clearly that, really, with regard to reinsurance, for instance, that we're price takers, and we have to understand clearly that we have to be careful about properly nurturing and ensuring that the industry here is administered properly and regulated properly, so that availability of insurance can always be here. It's very easy for us to kind of forget what it was like after Typhoon Punxsun Law, because it was so long ago. But at that time, there were some severe restrictions on the availability of insurance in our region. And a lot of that has to do with markets that are outside of us. And I think that as long as everything's regulated properly, and the companies are maintained and managed efficiently, that we'll always have the ability to rely on a sound domestic insurance industry, which I think is critical, yeah.
In regards to any kind of issues that have come up before the board, what are some that have come up, and how was it determined, what was the conclusion of that?
Well, you know, of course, most recently, it's cannabis issue, but I've always viewed my, my role on the Board of Directors as, I mean, I'm sorry, on the board, as supporting the decisions as recommended by the Commissioner. I think it's important for us to understand that the expertise of, the regulatory expertise lies with the, with the Commissioner's office. And it's my job as a member of the board to ensure that if something is recommended properly, and all of the recommendations are handed or submitted with sound opinions, then, of course, I'm there to give my approval. I think it's also important to note that the development of the regulatory infrastructure within that office, I've seen, as a member of my industry, I've seen it develop tremendously in the last five to 10 years. That's something that I think every member of the insurance industry is looking forward to, which is tighter and more consistent regulations. I know our organization is very, very firmly behind good regulatory framework, and that's exactly what we're starting, I mean, not starting, that's exactly what we're seeing out of the Commissioner's office now.
So in regards to regulations, so there's the federal law and the local law, so what do you see as the, how do you decide?
Yeah, well, insurance is one of those industries that actually develops around a statutory or local law framework. And there are no federal insurance industries per se. There are banking, banking federal regulations, and there are other regulations that apply federally, but with regard to insurance itself, that's a statutory matter. And so, however, there is a regulatory framework called the NAIC, which is the National Association of Insurance Commissioners, of which our insurance commissioner is a member, as well as every jurisdiction in the United States. And the NAIC is an organization that, for one, has come up with a regulatory framework, if you will, through model legislation. And I think that that's what's being considered in front of the legislature at this point, and it's something that I think every domestic insurer would be behind 100%, which is following a consistent regulatory framework that applies in every other jurisdiction in the United States.
All right, thank you for that. And so going back to your, your statement about you basically would review the decision by the Commissioner. So based, as long as it's based on, you know, facts, evidence, are you prepared in the case that you see otherwise, are you prepared to reverse a decision by the Commissioner?
Well, I can assure you that, in my experience on the board, I have not seen one decision that was reversed.
Okay.
I think it's important for the Commissioner's office to have the resources necessary to be able to make those solid and sound recommendations. As far as trying to interpret laws and statutes, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't profess to be one, but if I can get a recommendation from, from a legal mind or a lawyer, that would definitely allow me to make a decision if that was so required, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sure.
In regards to conflict of interest, you did list some items. So in those cases, do you see, how would you handle conflict of interest?
Well, you know, the irony is that, of course, it's my conflicts of interest that give me the experience necessary to sit on the board. So, of course, I have to understand absolutely when a conflict of interest would arise. And the way I see it very clearly is that, should there be something put in front of the board, which would benefit my organization exclusive to the entire industry, I would absolutely see that as a conflict of interest. There's no doubt, and there's no way that I would be privy to any of that communication at that point. Now, there are, of course, issues that are discussed at the board level, which apply to my industry. Now, I don't see that as a conflict of interest. I see that as something that applies in my, applies with my experience.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cassidy, for answering all those questions, and we look forward to your service. So I'd like to pass, open up the floor to Senator Moynihan, if he has any questions or comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Cassidy, for, again, stepping up once more.
Thank you.
We speak the same language. I appreciate that you're there, continue the good work, and looking forward to your continuous input for the people of Guam. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. Senator Tadegui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Wes, good to see you.
Good afternoon, yeah. Oh, hopefully not afternoon yet, right, but...
Still good morning.
Yeah.
And for the record, I've known Mr. Cassidy for many, many years, and we share the same family members, so, right. But again, thank you so much for stepping up on the plate. This makes sure, how many terms have you served on this board?
Three.
Oh, longer than Mr. Repodis?
Well, two and a half, because I inherited, I wouldn't say inherited, but I took over a term that was in mid-completion, just like Mr. McKinnon.
In mid, right. So this will be your fourth term?
Uh, no, third.
Third term?
Yeah.
Third term, okay.
Is it?
So about the same time, so you guys have been serving together?
Yes.
We've been together the whole time.
Has it been the whole time?
About the same time? Is that right? Okay. Well, definitely, there's history in your background, definitely, you fit the, you fit the bill when it comes to this position, and I thank you for that. But I do notice that you're still a member of the Haguenia Restoration.
Yeah.
How many times do you meet on that board?
Oh, that board is month, well, there's a subcommittee meeting and the monthly meeting, so it could be as many as twice.
Twice a month?
Yeah, it could be. But, of course, if you're not on a subcommittee, it would just be once a month.
So you have no problem serving on two boards?
Well, that was one of the things that... Well, that was one of the things that I put up to Vince Camacho, who gave the ethics seminar. And I asked him very clearly if this was going to be an issue. And he said that because I was appointed by the Speaker and not the legislature or the Governor's Office, that it wouldn't come into conflict with my banking and insurance board position.
Well, I'm glad you looked into it to make sure, you know, serving on two boards, sometimes there could be some kind of...
Well, I know that that's not, it's not supposed to happen.
It's not, right? But you did look into it?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Because there's no way that I'd want to compromise my board position, my position on the board. Yeah, without doubt.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for looking to that. Well, you know, I had a little bit of background in my insurance days as an insurance agent myself for property and casualty. And I know that some of the concerns that were brought up to my attention and I recall in the back, I've recalled, is the issue when, when companies on Guam that can insure, like let's say vehicles, heavy equipment, et cetera, can be shared on Guam. But then when you get these off-island companies coming into Guam and they're insuring their vehicles with their companies in the mainland.
Right.
Now, can you kind of explain what the board is, how you're going to address this concern because it seems to be, you know, something that's brought up every time I meet up with my insurance friends that it's a problem? So can you kind of explain for the audience why you can't do that or, you know, in the, if there is no opportunity to insure something, that's when you can go off island and insure on island? So can you kind of explain that and what are you guys doing to address this?
Okay. I think maybe we'll start with admitted insurance. Guam insurance law says that if insurance is available on Guam, then it must be purchased on Guam. And those are for certain lines of business. That would be like things insuring like houses and cars and that kind of thing. But outside of like boats and cargo, that would all fall within that, I guess, grouping. Now, when it comes to lines of insurance business like liability insurance, which protects an individual or a company from third-party liability, in other words, causing somebody injury or damaging their property and also workers' compensation. When it comes to workers' compensation and general liability, for instance, I think it's absolutely critical to understand that those lines of business have to be within the regulatory framework of the insurance commissioner. Because we're talking about legal liability and protecting that legal liability. And if there's some issue or a problem with regard to that, it's not, it's not the, the policyholder per se who is injured, it's the public who's injured, right? And so when it comes to those particular lines of business like auto liability, it's absolutely critical that that in particular be within the regulatory purview of the commissioner here to make sure that the innocent third parties are taken care of properly. Now, I think what you're speaking of is like, let's say contractors who, large contractors in particular, that may be located outside of Guam and are coming here to fulfill a contract. And in those instances, they must, they must purchase insurance from admitted insurance carriers if so available. And I think there's an understanding or at least a supposition that a number of these companies, these larger contractors are not purchasing the insurance locally, but are instead purchasing it from their local agent or broker or wherever they happen to be located and then just coming in through the back door and letting that happen. Now, with regard to workers' compensation and, and commercial automobile liability, there's no doubt that that's something that is immediately regulated and can be insured to be within local admitted insurance compliance. I think it's a bit more difficult when you're talking about like heavy equipment or something like that. But, you know, once again, I think this might actually lie with some of these contractors coming in and then, and then subcontracting a lot of business here locally, in which case the local contractors would be complying with that admitted insurance statute. And so there's kind of a, maybe a, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't be shocked if there was a misunderstanding at that prime contractor level.
Is there any enforcement or looking into these companies coming to Guam where they're required to purchase on island, from on island insurance companies?
Well, there's a...
So anyone looking into it?
Yeah. I mean, it's definitely being looked into and I think it's definitely being taken absolutely seriously. I know that it's been put in front of the Commissioner's Office and I think they're, they're looking at it seriously because it is, it is, it is an issue and I think there could be far-reaching effects if, if let's say, there's a, there's a problem with the insurance and there's like no coverage for somebody who is an innocent third party, you know, a guy gets hit by a car, it's not his fault. And if the insurance doesn't apply because it happens to be in, I don't know, Wisconsin or something like that, then that poor guy is not going to get his, his medical expenses paid for.
I understand a general liability, which larger companies, you know, have a global perspective, even if you're going outside of Guam and Lloyd's of London, which, you know, you go after, but on a liability perspective, I can see that. But when it comes to property, that is totally different. You know, that's property on this island.
Right.
You know, if they are, were to insure it, must be insured by insurance company. Michelle, have you issued out any notices for these companies? Have you gone out there to look at their documentation on these, especially when they're bringing in these heavy equipments or even purchasing vehicles on this island?
We, for the department as a whole, the tax side has a listing and they send out letters, just to give you an example of what they're doing. And then they follow up to make sure that all the taxes are paid, right? And so we, we are looking at sending similar letters for the insurance side to specifically military contractors that come to Guam and do business on Guam, but inside the fence, so to speak. So, yeah.
They do go outside too because, you know, where their barrackses are and where they, a lot of times they don't keep their equipment on the military base. They do travel on public roads, so.
Yeah.
They still need that liability once they touch a public road, so.
Yeah.
But you haven't issued out any notices so far?
No, not yet. And it's, it's basically, we have, we're short-staffed. But we are working with the board to, to get the, you know, notices out and at least...
Or information, request for information?
Yes, yes.
It wouldn't take very, it wouldn't be difficult. I mean, one person can easily take that list of these contractors that have been awarded, right, on base?
There's some cross-checking. We have to make sure that they're registered with our business license branch and then we'd go from there. If they are, we go, we go after them.
And it's just a, sending a letter to them, requesting for, you know, the information, what is your vehicles and, you know, especially property and then find out where are they insured. Even on the liability perspective, I know there's an argument to where, you know, liability because if they're, you know, out of California, they, they're under a certain insurance company, they will transfer that liability, you know, over to Guam to, you know, it is a U.S. territory, so they do recognize it. But property is another thing. So I appreciate both of you, you know, Wes, to follow up on something like this. It's really important. We're losing revenue. Next year, we're going to be at the peak of this military buildup and then it's going to start to taper off. So we've missed quite a bit, you know, from 2006, from the starting of the military or 2008, from the starting of the military buildup into today, how much have we lost in revenue for this island? So I appreciate you looking into that and thank you so much. And if you could provide an update, Michelle, with our chair, oversight chair?
Okay.
What is the plan moving forward? But other than that, Wes, I know you're a very capable individual.
Thank you.
I've known you to be a very honest man too as well. So I look forward to your next term, another six years, which I think is quite long. And I also think that, you know, the number of those serving is quite much, but, you know, I always take the consideration of the board, who's working the board and take their recommendations and their comments very, very, very seriously. So wish you the best and my door is always open. You know how to get a hold of me, so if there's anything I can do to assist you as you move forward in this position.
Thanks for the confidence.
Thank you so much. And thank you, everyone, for being here this morning still. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just looking over the, all the requirements that come with the board and commissions that you're serving on and certainly the extensive responsibilities of the Commissioner. Obviously, it's brought to light this morning, there's just a little more effort that needs to be put in of resources in your office. And, you know, we'd like to see certainly some consistency with regards to the board meeting, but certainly for you, Mr. Cassidy, I certainly appreciate your interest in wanting to serve. You certainly represent the insurance side of the House. I mean, a lot of people, these are very complicated issues, most people don't understand or get into. Normally, they're just at the customer end of the whole equation and hopefully it's favorable for all of us when it happens, not always. But I don't have any questions for you. I'm sure you've already gone through the scrutiny of Senator Telo and that and myself in the book. If you can get through that, you're, you're okay in my book, so.
Thank you.
Again, for all of you taking the time, I know it took up most of the morning, but thank you for coming in and providing your testimony. And again, your interest in serving because it's certainly very complicated oversight and extensive oversight of the work you do. I just think we just need to strengthen that process and resources. So we have some comfort level that, you know, things are going along and updated and moving as they need to. So thank you for your, your interest in serving and coming and providing your testimony this morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
If I could just say one thing or add one thing. I know that the adoption of the NAIC regulatory framework is at least possibly going to be considered by the legislature. I think what's important to understand is that that regulatory framework should make administration of the insurance regulations or the insurance codes significantly simpler and easier and may not necessarily require new human resources or as many or as much in terms of human resources. And so I would hope that that would be an additional consideration when looking at possible adoption of the NAIC Model Act.
Well, we certainly look forward to the discussion with regards to that. That would be good. Simplifies it for the rest of us. With that, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to comment and ask my question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Brown. And I just want to thank all the nominees for accepting to serve, continue to serve on this Insurance Commissioner, Insurance and Banking Board. I do appreciate the level of expertise that you bring to the board and your continued dedication to serving our people. So, to do as Mossi for your time this morning especially. And I know it's just the tip of the iceberg, this, this hearing, just really is the tip of the iceberg of what, what you gentlemen know. And I do appreciate continuing to work with you to help strengthen our, you know, our laws, our regulations and, you know, your insight, most importantly. I think it's very, very important and critical to see that we have this collective in this board and that you all have different views, I think, perspectives that can add to the strength of this commission. But also it's very important that, you know, really learning the laws and the regulations from the other side of, you know, of this board. So I know some of you are insurance experts, but really keeping an eye on the other part of banking and vice versa because your decision-making is going to be critical, as it was in the past boards. And, you know, I do appreciate your, also your service as far as continuing to be at these meetings. Quorum is such a critical issue. We've had such problems with that in the past and it's, I'm glad to see that we've been able to fill the membership of this, of this board to continue the work. And so being that, I think it's really important to have that consistent effort when it comes to developing the rules and regs and to really be, work in collaboration, I think is really critical. So again, I thank you for your time, your service and, you know, please have a great day. So the committee will continue, and my colleague would say create a great day. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM Monday, October 10th, 2022. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning. It can be dropped off of the mailboxes here at the Guam Congress Building or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. The time is now 10:45. This hearing is now adjourned. To do as Mossi.